Jonathan Shelkey is possibly absent tonight. Jerry DeTulio?
Here.
Christine Disney?
Here.
Daniel Gravy?
Here.
Patrick Quinn?
Here.
Will Kearns?
Here.
Michael Moore?
Here.
And Janet Leo is absent tonight.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, the agenda will stand as published. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any changes to the minutes? Please poll the commission. If you're new, please vote yellow.
Motion approved.
Thank you. On the public forum, this is a time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody on Zoom for public comment tonight?
Nobody is on Zoom.
And nobody in the audience? So that's easy. We'll move on to, there's no public hearings, there's no old business. I'll move on to new business, which is nine A. Commissioner Moore, baptism by fire.
Adoption of Resolution Number One, two thousand and twenty-four relating to the proposed Carr Street Urban Renewal Plan and its adherence to the city's comprehensive plan adopted in two thousand and nine. Review the proposed Carr Street Urban Renewal Plan, the plan, and adoption of a resolution regarding its conformity with the city's comprehensive plan, comp plan, and vision Wheat Ridge. The proposed plan anticipates private investment within its boundaries, which will primarily be zoned industrial employment, i.e. This may include the demolition of existing substandard and blighted structures and the construction of improvements that support local goals related to the land use, economic development, transportation, and sustainability. A portion of the plan area includes a small grouping of residential, including affordable, multifamily, and small amount of commercial rezone.
Thank you. Move on to our presentation.
Thank you. In fact, we were trying to get this up. Did you read both?
No, we're just reading both.
Why don't we do both, Mr. Chair? As you, maybe you could explain what we are going to do?
So we're going to read both the introductions, and it will take two separate motions. He's going to do both presentations. So Commissioner Quinn, do you want to go ahead and do nine B?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Nine B would be the adoption of Resolution Number Two dash two twenty twenty-four relating to the Lutheran Legacy Urban Renewal Plan and its adherence to the city's comprehensive plan adopted in two thousand and, excuse me, two thousand and nine. Item: Review of the Lutheran Legacy Urban Renewal Plan, the plan, and the adoption of resolution regarding its conformity with the city's comprehensive plan, envision Wheat Ridge, adopted in two thousand and nine, the comprehensive plan. The Lutheran Legacy Urban Renewal Plan intent: The plan anticipates private investment within its boundaries, including residential land uses, a high standard of development, demolition of the existing blighted structures, and the construction of improvements that support local goals related to land use, economic development, housing diversity, community services, transportation, and sustainability.
Thank you. So we've introduced nine A and nine B, and you're up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Steve Art. I do dual role with the city. I do the economic development end of it, and I also am the executive director of the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority. The reasoning that we are tying these both together into pretty much one presentation is because, as I tell my new board members on urban renewal, you've seen one urban renewal plan, you've seen them all. They're pretty much mirror each other as they go along, because they're really about, they normally say fifty thousand foot views of things. Urban renewal plans are about a hundred thousand foot views of what is going to occur in the community, because ultimately, it's the city's comprehensive plan, the planning commission, the planning division that drive what specific elements of specific development will look like within the community. So we're going to start off with the Carr Street Urban Renewal Plan. Wondering if I want to get this thing. There we go. See if this works. There we go. This is the plan area. Most people don't even know this is part of Wheat Ridge, because it's kind of down in the lower shelf of Wheat Ridge. But if most people know where the U.S. Truck School is located, along Carr Street, that is really the center area of the plan area. And then it proceeds to the east and ends at the terminus of Johnson Park, just along Wadsworth there. And then as you move slowly to the west, it looks like it encompasses I-70. It doesn't encompass I-70. It encompasses those areas along I-70, the roads on both sides that are in the city of Wheat Ridge. Slowly moves itself way down to Garrison Street. That would be at the far right-hand side of the picture that you see. It includes only Garrison Street. It includes none of the residential properties on Garrison. And then it moves itself up to the corner of Garrison and Forty-Fourth Avenue, which would include the insurance company there. And then as you move down to the Patriot's Pizza, that shopping center there, and works itself around in a large circle there. So urban renewal states before we can approve a plan, so plans are approved by the city council to an independent board, the authority for the urban renewal district that we have in the city of Wheat Ridge. And it says that we need to go to the planning commission to see that it conforms, and it's a recommendation that you're making this evening. It's actually not a full finding, it's just a recommendation that the plan does adhere to the comprehensive plan of the city of Wheat Ridge. Once you make your recommendation, we will then go forward to the city council, and the city council ultimately, hopefully, will approve both of these urban renewal plan areas. It will be done on a public hearing, and we're not sure of those exact dates yet, because there were some things that were done in the state legislature in two thousand and fifteen that were enacted in two thousand and sixteen that dictated some additional steps that we have to now do when we're forming urban renewal plan areas. And one of those is we have to have agreements with all the taxing entities that are assessing a mill levy against the urban renewal area. We have to have agreements with them with the sharing of the TIF, the tax increment that is produced by that area here. So in order to form an urban renewal plan area, we need to do four separate things. The first thing we need to do is sit down and decide what is our plan area going to be. And that was really that map that we looked at. We sat down as staff and looked at that plan area, decided what area should be in there, should not be in there. When we first started, it was really just a truck school. We just decided to expand it because of different things that we'll talk about as far as blighting conditions in there. We then have to do a condition survey. And a condition survey is a packet that says there are blighting elements within this plan area. Now, we're not calling every property in that area blighted. We're saying within this plan area that you're looking at this evening, there are blighting conditions in there. And I'll show you the list of what those blighting conditions are in just a second. Next thing we're going to do is we have to form an impact report. The impact report says, okay, by us using tax increment financing, that is by us utilizing that property tax that normally would go to the county, to the special taxing districts, now comes the Urban Renewal Authority to help do public improvements to spark economic development, new jobs, improved infrastructure in those areas there. And it has an impact on those agencies. So we created an impact report that was distributed to all those taxing entities, and they will have a chance to comment on them at this public hearing. And the final thing that we do is we create a draft plan, and that draft plan was in your packet this evening. That talks about really that hundred thousand foot level view of what an urban renewal plan will do for that specific area. These are the blighting conditions, and I'm not going to go over through all of them with you right now, but it really talks about, these are the thirteen blighting conditions that are in state statute that say you have to meet four of these before we will allow you to form an urban renewal plan. And we have figured out that there are more than four of those in this area. So within the Carr Street Urban Renewal Plan area, inefficient street layout, poor lot layout, it's unsafe, it's unsanitary there, there needs to be site improvements specifically along the Clear Creek there, it's in the five hundred year floodplain, that needs to be taken out of the five hundred year floodplain before any improvements can be built on the land, such as a new building. That's what tax increment financing can be used for, to help take it out of that floodplain. There's poor infrastructure in the ground there, there's endangerment there, public safety, as well as vacancy in properties along there. So the goals and the objective of the Carr Street Urban Renewal Plan area is to remediate unfavorable conditions within that area, to remove those blighting conditions. Again, we're not calling pieces of property in there and blight it. We're saying within that plan area, there are these blighting conditions in there. One of the things I need to mention to you, so it needs to adhere to the comprehensive plan of the city. But since that plan was done in two thousand and nine, there have been additional studies that have amended envisioned Wheat Ridge. And one of those is the Forty-Fourth Avenue Subarea Plan that was approved in two thousand and twenty-three, I believe it was, just less than a year ago. I believe this commission actually saw that plan and did have a chance to comment on it. So elements of that plan then help guide what's in the comprehensive plan and help guide what we can do in the Urban Renewal Authority. So within the plan and within your packet, there are certain areas that it talks about what we are doing to remediate those blighting conditions and how it adheres to the city's comprehensive plan. The first one is the economy and land use. It's really taking a blighted piece of property. That truck school, those areas down there really need some assistance to help them move them on, to advance them, to build new buildings, to improve the infrastructure that's all along there. Hopefully, tax increment will help retain some of the existing businesses we have there, because we can assist them by doing improvements to their businesses along there. It's also going to help with infill that would happen along that specific area. It's also going to do community character and design, and that deals with ensures quality development for that area there. It requires new development and existing development to meet the standards that are in place with the city and in our comp plan. A lot of those businesses down there were created before we had our comp plan in, before the city really enacted the elements that we want to see done in development. So this can help them do that. It can help with transportation in there. New infrastructure, new roads, new multi-transit areas in there. Perhaps a bus someday will get into that area there and help move employees in and out of that area. Community services, along there you have the Clear Creek, and that Clear Creek Trail certainly could use some help. Using tax increment financing can help make that trail a lot more efficient and more enjoyable for the employees there and the residents of Wheat Ridge and other communities that utilize that trail along there. A sustainable future. We're always looking for jobs, jobs, jobs. People don't realize that, that jobs really drive a municipality. And so if we can improve that area there, build a new building, the U.S. Truck School has been sold, that site there, to a developer who wants to put up about a four hundred thousand square foot building approximately there, which will drive new employment to Wheat Ridge. These people need to live somewhere, they need to eat lunch somewhere, they're going to go shopping afterwards, they're going to go to the restaurants in the area here. So building that is going to help the sustainable future of Wheat Ridge. Again, as I mentioned, the Forty-Fourth Area Subarea Plan, while this plan area really just touches the Garrison portion of it, it really is something to start enhancing what's going on in the Forty-Fourth Avenue Subarea Plan. So that is the Carr Area Plan. I'm going to now go through the Lutheran Plan, and it will be a very truncated presentation on that. Let me close this one down. So this is the Lutheran Campus Urban Renewal. And I don't know why it's not starting from the beginning. Well, we'll just go along it like it is right now, then. This is the Lutheran Campus Plan. So I think we all know the Lutheran Campus. Probably a lot of you have had children there or have hopefully not been patients there, but know someone's been there. It's approximately ninety-nine acres of land out there. You'll see to the right-hand side, there's like a little thread that looks like it goes off the right-hand side. That's a Rocky Mountain ditch. Certainly, as development starts to go into the Lutheran Campus there, that Rocky Mountain ditch is going to need to be improved. So we included that into the urban renewal plan area, something we can utilize tax increment financing to help improve that ditch, help drainage along into that piece of property. You also notice up at the top left-hand side is the church that is located at the western terminus of the hospital campus. They elected not to be in the urban renewal plan, so we did what they wished, and we did not include them into the urban renewal plan. And then at the bottom of the picture, you'll see the residential properties. Traditionally, you don't involve existing residential properties into an urban renewal plan. They're not going to create a lot of tax increment, so you just leave them out of your plan. This pretty much says the same thing of what we have to go through to form an urban renewal plan. We found blighting conditions there. We had to, oh wait, the blighting condition is going to be the next one. So we have to find four of them. We found six elements that were blighting conditions within that plan area, including street layout, lot layout, unsafe and unsanitary, needs to have side improvements, there needs to be infrastructure, and there is vacancy, especially after an existing hospital leaves that ground, there really is going to be vacancy on that piece of property. The plan purpose is here again to reduce, eliminate, and prevent the spread of blight within the plan area. The plan vision is pretty much the same. It's really to develop the Lutheran Legacy Campus. Now, an urban renewal plan does not spell out specifically what will be on the property. It doesn't say thou shalt build X. It just says thou shalt help remediate blighting conditions. So within the plan that came up, that was done by the Lutheran, the owners of the Lutheran Campus and the citizens, looked at two scenarios. One of those was a medium density mixed use project with a diversity of housing, passive spaces. And another scenario says it's going to be a little higher density there, flex use, mixed use development, office retail employment. I can't tell you what it's going to be, and an urban renewal plan will not dictate what that should be. That's ultimately whoever purchases the piece of property, that goes through the rezone, comes to the city, and gets blessing from the city council on what wants to be built on that piece of property. The plans and goals will be really to implement the Lutheran Legacy Master Plan. That, so we have the Forty-Fourth Avenue Subarea Plan that was incorporated into the envisioned Wheat Ridge, the comprehensive plan. The same thing with the Lutheran Legacy Campus Master Plan was incorporated into renewal Wheat Ridge. The adherence to the comp plan are pretty much the same thing. Economy and land use are very valuable in that area there. Talks about that we are going to build structures that are of high quality there, there are going to be amenities to the communities that are going to provide housing for our citizens. Maybe someday City Hall will be located in that area there, but there are many things that we're looking for as we move forward. The next one is neighborhood and housing. So by using tax increment financing, we can start building new neighborhoods in Wheat Ridge. These people are going to shop in our stores, these people are going to eat in our restaurants, these people are going to be a valuable member of our community. And so by using tax increment financing, we can start building a vibrant neighborhood community. Again, neighborhoods and housing are an important part of what we'll be doing, so we'll be looking into those. Tax increment financing will be used to help put in that infrastructure of that piece of property there, to help advance the goals of the comprehensive plan. Community character and design. We will build quality, energy-efficient buildings that are a complement to the city of Wheat Ridge, will ensure that there's quality design. Ultimately, that's not the Urban Renewal Authority that does that. That would ultimately come down to the city council and the planning division to decide what that quality is. But once they have blessed it, because we kind of are at the will of what the city council wants to do, if the city council blesses whatever development's going on there, we can utilize tax increment financing. Community services, that's going to have a large component. The citizens want to see some green space in there, especially in that Rocky Mountain ditch area that you can't build on top of it. So I think you'll see a large component in there. If you go out to the campus right now and go to the southern end of the campus, there's real nice walking areas along there, walk along some nice greenbelt along there. I'm certainly sure that will be maintained in the plan moving forward. And if a developer decides they want to use a tax increment financing, it gives us a chance to spell out exactly what we want to see in that open space as we go along. A sustainable future. New homes, again, are going to bring new residents, are going to bring additional dollars to the city. I know there are people out there who really don't like growth and development a heck of a lot, but that's what kind of drives the city. That's what keeps us to be able to keep police out on the street, our streets safe, plowed, and everything that goes along with that. The detailed recommendations and considerations will be an aspect that's on there. Let me get to that page. So we hope that the community's vision of what that subarea plan will help drive what the development will look like, but ultimately, it's whoever buys that piece of property that what that property will look like. So again, as we did with the last plan, we're here tonight to answer any questions and get your recommendation that both of these plans do adhere to the comprehensive plan envisioned Wheat Ridge. Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. I think what we'll do is we'll go to public comment if we have any, then we'll come back for commissioner questions and comments. Do we have anybody on Zoom for public comment on nine A or nine B tonight?
Nobody on Zoom tonight.
Thanks. So I'll go to the commission. Commissioner Will, do you have anything? Commissioner Gravy?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
On the Carr property, you know, I was drawn obviously to the fact that, you know, it encompasses so much of the area surrounding the Clear Creek. And you had mentioned briefly about the floodplain designation. Can you speak in a little bit more detail about that in terms of if, you know, when that was designated and if the redevelopment would change the way that's kind of understood?
So I'm not Mark Westberger, who you probably have heard from many times here. Mark Westberger runs our floodplain plans here. And Janet, you may know some about it also, so I'll let her chime in if she chooses to. That entire area, when it rains, floods. A lot of those houses are highly impacted. A lot of those businesses cannot get insurance nowadays because of the impacts when Clear Creek does overflow. If there were to be a one hundred year or a five hundred year episode in there, it would impact a large portion of that area there. This would allow us to raise up Clear Creek, not the creek, the area around the creek, so that it would not flood. What that would lead to is lower insurance rates and ability to get insurance for a lot of these businesses and the residences along there. Did I sound like Mark? A little shorter?
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. And then I had a quick question on Lutheran, too.
Yes.
I know that it's hard not to get ahead of yourself when thinking about Lutheran Campus, and I know this is like initial steps, but one question I had is, you know, I often drive along Forty-Fourth, and what stands out from the perspective I have of the campus and thinking about the redevelopment is just a couple of the what seem to be more historic structures right there, the church that is, doesn't, you know, within the plan, and then, you know, that like colored blue house kind of right next to it by the hospital. But I'm curious, in terms of urban renewal, is there any process that considers historic preservation of certain buildings? Or is it something that's addressed, if so, in an entirely different process?
Very much so. So I can't speak to will those houses remain on there? That's not urban renewal's plan. But certainly, urban renewal, if it is designated by the city or the developer, that we want to retain those properties, those houses, the church on there, urban renewal dollars could be used to bring those up to grade. I mean, that blue house would be a cool little restaurant. We could come along and provide funding to help bring that up using tax increment financing. But we won't speak to the specific uses on the property. That's ultimately the city council's purview.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I just know that that's an important part of Wheat Ridge history, how far it goes back.
Yeah, and again, we do like historic preservation, we'll do that, but the plan does not speak specifically to those individual units. Thank you. Commissioner Disney?
So if we agree that this complies to the city's vision and city council, then it goes to city council and they approve it, is that when the TIF will start? Or does that have to happen through a vote of the community? When does that happen?
No, that's when the plan, the day the plan is formed. So what we have to do is we have to have all those agreements that I talked about earlier on with all the taxing entities done, hold that public. Once those are done, we hold a public hearing in front of the city council. Once city council forms that plan, the next day, the twenty-five-year clock starts. That's why we're kind of looking right now on the Lutheran Campus, when we start that clock. There's a lot of implications that are involved in it. We may do that one, we may do Carr Street first and do the Lutheran Campus later on upon, just before the sale of the property.
Would they both potentially then be collecting money at the same time?
Yeah, but you're always collecting money in arrears. So once development occurs, it'll be the following year when this new development gets assessed by the assessor's office, and then increment will start flowing after that. So it usually lags behind about a year or two before increment starts flowing in. So normally what we'll do is we'll obligate future increment into the development. We won't say we're going to give you a million dollars today. We're going to say in the next twenty-five years, we're going to give you up to one million dollars, or twenty-five years, whichever occurs first.
Okay. And then you said that the truck driving school had been sold?
Yes.
Is it going away, or did somebody buy it and take it over?
No, it will be going away, and the proposal, and I always say proposal, because until sticks go in the ground, you never know. There is a proposed, a couple of hundred thousand square foot industrial building that's proposed on the site there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. But again, Ms. Disney, we don't look at the specific development. The plan just says remediation of blight, and by building that building there, putting infrastructure and new roads, taking it out of the floodplain, is going to remediate blight. Commissioner Moore?
No question, excuse me, no questions.
Commissioner Quinn?
Mr. Chairman, nothing at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Shelkey?
Well, first of all, my apologies for being late. But yeah, and maybe you've already answered the question, but I'm really concerned about the whole issue of the recreation value in the Lutheran site, if you mentioned the trail. But the whole idea of, and maybe this is farther down the road, but the whole idea of if you're going to have a new housing area, it seems to me that the housing areas that are going to be the winners are going to be the ones that provide for alternative modes of transportation, where the walking paths, bike paths, all those kind of things. How does that fit into this?
So ultimately, as I've been expressing, what individually happens on the property is not of the purview of the Urban Renewal Authority. Until such time as they come to us and say, we'd like TIF to build this type of housing, and my board says, we hate that housing, that doesn't even fit in, we don't, or there's no affordability in that, we do that. So ultimately, we go by the guidance of the city council. The city council blesses whatever development were to occur on there. That's the guidance that we follow. So ultimately, your question is really more of a council-directed thing. What we're here tonight is looking at the comprehensive plan that talks about these elements, transportation, livability, providing more residential, that's what we're really looking at, again, that high level view. And I apologize for not having a specific answer.
No, that's okay, I understand.
Thank you. Steve, would you mind briefly describing to the board and for the public how the TIF works with the county and the assessor and the treasurer, just how that flows?
Quick one-on-one on TIF, tax increment financing. You have a piece of property that you own. Mr. Tulio, you own a commercial piece of property. It's empty right now, nothing on it. Every year, you're paying one thousand dollars in property tax to the county. The county gets that property tax, and they divide it up. The county gets some, the school district gets some, the water district, fire district, they all get, they divide it up on all.
they all get, they divide it up on all those that have a mill levy on your tax bill. By you, Mr. DiTulio, coming to the Urban Renewal Authority, said, "Look, I'm going to build a two-story building on there that's going to house all these nice things." Now suddenly, your property tax goes from $1,000 to $10,000 a year. That $9,000 extra dollars, the difference between $1,000 and $10,000, that $9,000 is called increment. Mr. DiTulio still pays the $10,000 to the county. They take the $1,000 off, plus every year, they get a little marker up. They take that $1,000 and they still divide it to the school district, fire district, water district, county and all that. That extra $9,000 comes back to the Urban Renewal Authority. The Urban Renewal Authority then invests into public infrastructure in Wheat Ridge. So that money that Mr. DiTulio traditionally paid for the $1,000 goes out to all these districts, it could be used anywhere in Jefferson County. This $9,000 increment comes directly back to Wheat Ridge to be used in Wheat Ridge, to advance Wheat Ridge, to improve Wheat Ridge. We get it for a period of 25 years. Now you say, "Why would these districts give up that money?" Well, because if I don't give that increment, that developer's going to walk out the door and say, "I'll just go to the neighboring city or neighboring state." So by allowing us to have that tax increment, they've given us the opportunity that they realize for 25 years now, I'm going to give up that increment. At the end of 25 years, now I'm going to have a development, I'm going to get all that reward back, plus I'll have an improved area there. Now, we have to come up with these agreements, and those agreements may say between them that they want to share the sales tax or the property tax, excuse me, in some way. Mr. DiTulio's then, in his day job, his real day job right now, when the assessor comes out and we pay our property taxes, it's his job, along with the assessor, to divide it up and pay, make those payments to the Urban Renewal Authority and to all those special districts. I think that's how it's done, Jerry, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And then the question is, is there any special districts that you have agreements that you don't take their increment, like Public Safety or any groups like the Fire Department?
Well, we will have to enter into those agreements, so we have just started negotiations with all of them. Before we will approve these plans, we have to have these deals done with these agencies. So I'm talking right now to the fire district, the school district, Rocky Mountain Flood District, Urban Drainage, Sanitation District, Wheat Ridge Sanitation District, and the Carr Street has another one, I can't remember which sanitation district is. So we're in conversations with all of them. So right now, on these two areas, we don't have any agreements. On our existing plan areas, we do have agreement with the West Metro Fire District. All right, there.
Thanks. Any other questions, Mr. Gravy?
Just real quick, how many existing plan areas are there in Wheat Ridge?
There are currently five existing plan areas. One is in the basics, 38th Avenue from Wadsworth to Sheridan. The second one is Wadsworth Corridor, pretty much from 44th Avenue down to 35th Area. The third one is I-70 Kipling Corridor, that's our largest one. That really starts about where Applejack lives, the Applewood Shopping Center goes all the way up I-70 to the TOD area, curves around, makes a big U-turn, comes down Kipling to 26th Avenue. The fourth area is the, what's called the Ward Road, 44th Avenue, and that pretty much the truck school on 44th. For about a quarter of a mile surrounding there, we have an urban renewal plan area there. And the fifth and final one is called the West End 38th, that's our only single-use urban renewal area, and that's the West End Apartments at 38th and Uppam.
Just so everybody knows, too, so when they, that $9,000 goes back, is collected on the TIF, the county, the treasurer's office sends that $9,000 to Urban Renewal, and they have to divvy it up amongst those different properties that are under urban renewal because there's different agreements. So one property may get $1,000, another property may get $2,500, correct? And then you have to do all that calculation on percentages?
The month of January, I wrote 24 checks to different agreements that we have in the city of Wheat Ridge on urban renewal. So a lot of people don't know what we're doing, but if you drive around town, I mean, just to highlight quickly, a few of those on 38th Avenue, we're doing the new barbecue place, we did the new patio outside of the bowling alley, Clancy's is going to be extending their patio, the Perrin's Row is one that we did. We pretty much assisted in the corners at Wheat Ridge Shopping Center, the new Sprout Center called Kipling Ridge Shopping Center, we invested into that. The Gold Center at 26th and Kipling, we've given them about $3.5 million to aid them. We helped Clear Creek Crossing in there, up at the TOD area, the new apartments, we did a TIF with them. So we're really active all around town, and small businesses. Heidi over at Swiss Flower and Gift Shop, she's got, is it Swiss Flower and Gifts? It's just, we assisted there. So we do large business, small businesses, anything to advance the city of Wheat Ridge.
Do we have any other questions or comments from the commission before we go into a motions? Mr. Moore, a motion's in order for 9A? No, he'll read the B. You just read that. Or the denial.
Mr. Chairman, please. Within your resolution for the Carr Street project, in the first whereas, I believe it is, it had a date of February 14th, and if you look at the Lutheran Legacy one, it mentions March 26th? Yeah, they both should be the same, they should both reference the March 2023 date. Ms. Easley has made the changes, so when the chairman does sign the resolution, she has the correct ones. That's the only one. It says the city council found blight in March. I had put today's date, we didn't meet with them today, so back in March. And there, so that correction in that resolution has been made, and like, make sure you're aware of that.
Thanks. Okay, a motion's in order for 9A?
Recommend, excuse me, recommended motion. I move to adopt Resolution 1, 2024, finding the Carr Street urban renewal plan is in conformance with the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan envisioned Wheat Ridge.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Commissioner Disney. Comments on the motion? Please pull the commission.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
And 9B, Commissioner Quinn, a motion's in order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt Resolution 2-2024, finding the plan is in conformation with the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan envisioned Wheat Ridge.
Conformance.
Conformance. What did I say?
Confirmation.
Oh, conformance, sorry.
Is there a second on the motion to approve or to adopt?
Second.
You have a motion to, seconded by Commissioner Kerr? Any questions? Pull the commission?
Motion approved, seven to zero.
Kerr, Commissioner Kerr, excuse me. Thinking of Andy Kerr, the commission. Thanks, Dave. Okay, we'll move on to 9C, which is the CU Students Research Opportunity, presented presentation by Jake Karas.
Hi, I'm Jake. I'm a doctoral candidate at the University of Colorado Boulder. I'm in the Department of Sociology, and I'm here to present to you today my dissertation research. I'm currently conducting Quality of Data Collection for, and I would like to invite you all to participate in the study. And we felt it was most appropriate to give you a presentation briefing what the purpose of the study is and what it's about, and hopefully, the kind of lessons and objects that are part of my study are also interesting to you. So, this is the title, my working title. As you know, a dissertation takes a few years, so the title has also changed multiple times, but yeah, let's get started. And also, feel free to interrupt with questions at any time. This is not a, you know, formal presentation, this is for me to talk to you all about it and to share the information.
Oh, it scrolls real fast. Oh, we're all done.
Yeah, we went to the end real quick. So, one of the primary focuses of my study is really on small cities across the Denver metro area. And that's because the literature within sociology and urban planning is largely focused on major city developments, like the city of Denver, New York, Los Angeles, and other large metropolitan areas. But it doesn't typically focus on smaller cities around those larger cities and the major impact that they have on urban development and where people live. As you can see from the slide, only 750,000 people live in Denver, but over 2 million people live in the surrounding cities around the Denver, you know, central core. And that means that small cities like Wheat Ridge and Arvada and Westminster and Broomfield and Centennial, so many, have a huge impact on the daily lives of citizens in the Denver metro area. And when it comes to public health, as planners and planning commissioners, you all have a major impact on what that experience is like, because you're designing and approving the projects that become their homes, their businesses, their sidewalks, the parks and trails that they enjoy, and this can have a major impact on their daily lives as well as their ability to live healthy, sustainable, healthy and sustainable lives. For example, within urban development in that context, we have air quality concerns, we have walkability concerns, we have physical safety concerns, all things that I'm sure many of you think about with each project that you approve, or, you know, maybe have a specific area of focus that you're interested in. Ooh, we are really jumping, sorry. The study that I'm focused on is, again, really trying to answer these questions about public health and housing development, and just general development within these smaller cities, because right now, the Denver metro area, according to Dr. Cog, the Denver Regional Council of Governments, we're short about 70,000 housing units across the entire metro area, not just the city of Denver, the whole metro area. And so, there is still a good degree of growth that's expected for the whole metro area in the future. A lot of the controversy comes to your meetings, it comes in the process that you hear on a regular basis, your city councils here in the small cities across Denver metro, and that's traffic overcrowding, the need for better development, need for expanded parks protecting those green spaces. And so we really have to deal with those conflicting experiences of our residents across all these different cities, and that's really challenging, especially when we do have to worry about local economies, making sure people can get to work, but also, we're concerned about their health and their ability to go for a walk and, you know, work, or I should say, walk with your dog and enjoy that experience, as well as get that exercise that really helps promote respiratory health and cardiovascular health for every person who lives in your neighborhoods. So some of the research questions that I'm focused on, these are four key questions that I'm studying. Again, a dissertation is not a small feat, it's going to be over 200 pages, it's currently 100 pages long, and that's just to explain the problem. So these four questions are the best I could do to summarize it down, and it really starts with, we need to just look more at what is this relationship between public health and urban planning when we plan for the future? And how can we intersect those two much more strongly so that we can really influence not only our future urban planning, but our current urban planning with the knowledge we have of public health and infrastructure? Secondly, I ask questions about what are the types of, you know, discussions that are going on in these smaller cities now? The discussions you all are having at this commission, as well as on your city councils, are really important to understand. What are the types of discussions you're having? What are you talking about? What is important to you all? And that needs to be documented within the literature, because what's important to you in smaller cities is going to be different than the experience of Denver or New York or, you know, all these other larger cities I've mentioned previously. Thirdly, we have a discussion on the urban growth machine that may be a theory you're not as familiar with. I'm happy to provide citations at the end if you're interested in these topics. And there's a real question of whether or not these major theories that have been presented within the sociological and urban planning literature actually apply to your experience within the city of Wheat Ridge or within Broomfield and Arvada. That's one of my primary questions, and I want to test that theory by asking you all what your experience is and what the experience is of the planners who work in all of these cities. And if those theories don't pan out, that means we need new theories to actually work from in these fields to help us better understand your experiences. Lastly, the real question, and this one focuses less on you, but actually, part of my study is talking to the residents of these newer neighborhoods and getting their experiences. And so I want to talk to them about their perception, their experience of neighborhoods that are designed through these public processes, and understand their, how they feel their health is impacted by what goes out through a development process. So what do we know? The key part that I really hope you can take away from this process is that when we combine public health, urban planning, and sociology, which is my specialty, which is the study of just the human experience of living in society and having to work together and building these beautiful communities that we have, the thing is, is that the built environment has direct and observable impacts on people's health and their lives. These community health indicators are used by our public health departments at the county level or in other areas, you know, by our local medical facilities, and those health indicators are sometimes very poor, and some things that we need to address, such as cardiovascular disease. We know heart disease is one of the number one killers in the United States, and that's concerning when we know one of the simplest solutions to improving cardiovascular health is going for a walk each day with your dog or maybe with your partner. But there are tons of other factors that are built into the built environment that may constrain us from living healthy lives, or they may help us live those healthy lives, such as when we think about green spaces and enjoying our community spaces. I'm sure you all have taken walks in the park with your family or friends or children, and those parks are a great space where actually it decreases your overall stress levels. You can see improvements in your respiratory health because of those walks going on. Or maybe you took a bike ride and you got pretty healthy doing that, you know. Bicyclers way healthier than me, I don't do enough of that for sure, I'm mostly running from city to city these days doing this study. But there's tons of major benefits when we look at it. I've listed a few of them here in this slide, but the real key is that when you look at an individual's health, you see that an individual's health is tied to their community's health, that may be tied to their state's health, it may be tied to even our larger national conversations and our culture. And so if you see on the right, you have the image that came from a social epidemiology textbook that I used with my classes, you see how you have these individual level factors. You know, we talk about genetics as a factor in our lives. That's just one part of a much larger story, and the built environment and our living conditions are in there as well, but they're also often not talked about as much. And more often, we actually don't have many public health people coming here to comment to you all on, you know, what they think about the different projects. And so, what I'm trying to do in the study is really think about those, and how can we communicate better across all of these different aspects of our communities to give a broader perspective as well as incorporate health and thinking about health when we design and develop the future for our cities. One of those examples that I think is really key and may come up in your work fairly regularly is when we think about neighborhood design and the connectivity of these different neighborhoods. You may have heard some of the planners talk about, you know, connecting street grids, integrating spaces better where people can traverse those boundaries in a smoother way. This goes back all the way to Jane Jacobs, who really identified some of the first gaps in the study of urban planning, where she found that, you know, highways or railroads or blighted neighborhoods like you were just reviewing may actually cause boundaries to spread up where people can't actually walk through them or don't feel safe enough to walk through there. But also, when you look at it and you look at your zoning plans and your comprehensive plan, we're looking for the diversification of those neighborhoods where you have access to a grocery store, you have access to a local restaurant, a place where you can socialize, you have access to a variety of public amenities that's either provided by the city or provided by local businesses. And just within those same areas, you can see how, when you have a low diversity, it can have a pretty significant impact on your ability to traverse those neighborhoods. And so these are the types of questions that we look at within comprehensive plans, and I'll also be looking at within comprehensive plans across all of the cities in the Denver metro area of how are we thinking about connecting neighborhoods, building stronger social relationships, and in the process, improving health by improving their social lives as well. And so, these are just one example, I think it's a great visual that people are really able to grasp onto. Ultimately, and this is my big takeaway, you know, before I move into what the actual specific aspects of my study are, is that urban planners are actually kind of public health workers as well. They know quite a bit about it, they might not always tell you. I've been fascinated in interviewing urban planners across the region, just how knowledgeable they all are on public health, as well as their day jobs, the city zoning codes, and their experiences working through all of these paperwork and documentation with developers, with you all, with so many different individuals. They bring a wealth of knowledge to the experience. And specifically, a lot of people don't realize that actually, within state law, the comprehensive plans, otherwise referred to in state law as the community master plans, but we more commonly know them as the comprehensive plans, and every city has these, they actually were every city has these. They actually were originally set up to really be promoting health. It was one of the first concerns when these, uh, projects were implemented, particularly in the 1950s and earlier. There were some plans in New York City and San Francisco that were implemented as early as the 1910s. Um, and so public, promoting health, safety, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare are right up in the state law about why that plan exists. And yet, quite often, we find that health isn't even mentioned outside of maybe the park section of many comprehensive plans. And so that can be really important when we're thinking about it. And, uh, I've seen conversations on many different commissions where they're trying to understand, how can we integrate health into that conversation when we see it is an important part of developing our comprehensive plan and it's in the state text of what's being recommended for a part of the plan? Um, and so I also just, uh, you know, hands down to the planning commissions and to the, you know, all of our city workers that are putting together these plans in the first place. I know there are a ton of work. I've read many of them, hundreds of pages of long, again. Um, but yeah, so I, it's kind of also a shout out to all the great people that do work across these communities. So for my actual study, you'll see there's just two general methodologies, and I'll keep this brief. You don't have to read the whole thing. Uh, my first key methodology is ethnography. And really, that just sums down to, I'm going out into these communities, every community, um, and doing the best I can to actually connect and experience those spaces. Uh, I'm not just asking for your feedback. I also go visit the neighborhoods and places that people recommend to me. Uh, you have to experience it for yourself in a lot of these places, particularly when I'm trying to take the physical tangible experience of somebody's neighborhood and put it into words on a page. Um, I find that ethnography is a key part of the study, although it will slow down my dissertation by, you know, a good six months. Um, the key part of ethnography, though, is really engaging with that experience of the places that we're living in, um, as a researcher myself, um, and trying to step into those spaces in a different way, uh, especially when we have such a vast number of communities, um, you know. Again, I've named all the different cities that I'm asking to participate in the study. I've been trying to go to every single one of them myself and experience the different sections that each of the community members who have talked to me have recommended. And I've gotten some great recommendations, particularly for restaurants. So that's always a wonderful experience. Um, so yes, trying to embed myself into the community and really collect that information for my own perspective as well as to understand the perspective of the participants in a better way. Uh, the data collection here is really site visits. It includes social mapping. That's something as simple as, uh, I might spend a few hours in a public park, mapping everything that I see happen within those spaces, um, from where people are walking to, uh, do I see dogs? Do I see cats? Do I see, uh, people playing? Do I see children in the neighborhood? Do I see activities? Um, and I'll just sit there for a few hours documenting everything that I see happen in a specific space. And that's probably the most detailed, um, level I'll go, but there's also just other experiences of just observing the how people use a space. How are they engaging with certain objects in certain spaces? Like a park bench. Are people actually using it or are they not? And those are just as valid questions. We want to know if they're useful or maybe they're just positioned wrong. Uh, a lot of times, uh, what we do in that social mapping process is if we see something that we don't fully understand, we'll actually stop and just ask somebody who's walking by what they think of that space, um, to try and get a better perspective. The second methodology is grounded theory. And this is going to sound a little strange. It, it's really not theory. Um, grounded theory is the process of developing theories from the bottom up. So taking the experience of the people who live within the communities, the people who are on the commissions, the planners who are working through these processes, and developing theories from their experiences. Not taking existing theories that have been written about, you know, in the literature since the 1980s, but rather trying to see if a new theory arises out of what people speak to from their actual lived experiences. And this is where a lot of the survey data and interviews are important to this study. Uh, we need to collect that information from everybody who participates across all of these different cities because that's how we develop a new theory from all of your perspectives. I expect and anticipate, based on the existing literature, that the previously mentioned Urban Growth Machine theory is not really that applicable to every single city, small cities' experience. And so grounded theory is going to be important in developing what that new perspective actually looks like. How can we contribute a different version of the story to the literature and for future generations to understand better? Um, so again, the data collection here is really focused on the interviews and, uh, survey, um, and I'll get into that right now. The question of how can you participate in this study? Um, there's multiple phases to this study. They're all designed, uh, to, you know, be as flexible as possible so that people can participate in a way that's best for them, uh, as possible. Uh, the first phase is a community health and value survey. This is a completely anonymous survey conducted through Qualtrics, uh, provided by the University of Colorado Boulder. Uh, the study takes about 10 minutes. I've checked, um, and we're slowly getting results in. And, uh, we actually have the study designed specifically for, um, planners and community members, but I've divided those up so that way we can recognize who are planners and commissioners and who are residents because we'll be focusing on two different subject areas. But the overall data is completely anonymous. Any identifying information that is collected by Qualtrics, as you know, IP addresses and stuff is immediately deleted. And all study information is also completely deleted at the end of the study as well. None of this is being retained for any future studies. Um, so data security is obviously a very large concern at, at the university, especially when we're talking about health and health concerns and your opinions. So we really take data security seriously, and it's something that, uh, I wrote a number of pages on for how to protect the data, uh, in particular. That survey is relatively short and straightforward. I hope you'll join us on that survey. Um, the link will be provided. I think, Jana, you already have the link to the survey and you can share that out. Um, I don't know who takes it other than what neighborhood you're in, so, uh, I won't know if anybody participates, but I really hope you do. And also feel free to provide feedback to me directly at any time. The second phase of the study is the semi-structured interviews. And this is where I love participation by, I understand people have busy lives. It's one hour. It can be in Zoom or in person. And I'm also happy to buy you a cup of coffee, uh, if you're available for it because I know, you know, that's about the max I can offer and it's a full hour of your time. But this is where we really get to understand your experiences as a commissioner or as a planner. I've also invited your entire city staff to participate in the study as well as all the cities from around your nearby communities. Um, and so it's really exciting to get to hear all these different perspectives and ideas and experiences and bring them all together into one thing. Those interviews are specifically tailored to your experience as a commissioner as well as, or to a planner. Um, and I have separate protocols developed and questions abound. Um, so actually, most of the time, I don't get to ask all of the questions I have, but rather, uh, I try to go with the flow of the conversation and benefit from your experience and what you'd like to share. Uh, you're not expected to have any public health background or information for this. Uh, I have questions that are as simple as asking what types of healthy behaviors do you see within your neighborhoods when you go out for a walk? Um, and they can be as simple as that, or they can get more complicated. Uh, I have backup questions on questions to really kind of probe the ideas and the experiences you all have. There is a second part of the study, and this will be happening later in the spring, uh, and towards summertime when you can go out for a walk. This is the participatory research part of the study, and we don't have to go too much into detail here, but, uh, if you do participate in the interview, you'll be invited back to participate in this phase three and phase four part of the study, which is really where you get to become the researcher and I send you out with a series of prompts to explore your own neighborhoods in your own city in the same way that I'm doing and come back with your opinions. And that's the total of my research. Um, hopefully there was something interesting there for you all. Um, if you're interested in some of the different theoretical backgrounds or in the, uh, literature that I've used, I've highlighted some of the key content in the PowerPoint that can be shared with you, um, as well as some of my favorite books on urban sociology and urban literature that have influenced the reason why I've come to design this study. So yeah, thank you all.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board?
If-
Mr. Gravy?
If-
Sorry.
If we want to participate, who do we tell?
Uh, you can either speak to Jana. She has my email already. Um, you can also see my email is on the slide and you can contact me directly. Either way, I believe, uh, I'll hand it over to you.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and send out that link and Jake's information as well. So you will have a link to the survey and his contact information.
To the entire commission? You'll send the link out to every, okay, thanks.
Yeah. And if you have any questions about the study as well, again, like data security or, you know, what types of questions there are, um, I want to emphasize that you're not obligated to participate, uh, in any way. There is no, uh, obligation to continue the study. If you start partway and you decide that the, the interview is not your style, uh, you are free to leave and, you know, have your information withdrawn from the study, um, as well as the survey and lots of other things. So, um, there's lots of flexibility. I'm allowed to really work to make sure that you're comfortable in part, that part of the study. Any information you need, um, I'm obligated to present, uh, to you as soon as possible. That's a requirement of the, uh, institutional research board for the University of Colorado Boulder.
Mr. Gravy, did you have a question or-
Just real quick, what, what was the name of that book that you had on one of the slides? Was it Green Growth Machine?
Oh, uh, so there's, did I put that in here or? So these are the books I put in, um, the one on the slide earlier?
Yeah, no, there's, I saw it too.
Oh, in this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. So those are two of the theories on the growth machine. So Malak is the original author, Logan and Malak. Those are the original papers for the growth machines theories. And then Dilworth and Stokes and Golden Lewis. That is a short book. It's a very small one, um, has a kind of new adaptation to the theory. Um, and that's become more recent, uh, within urban planning literature in particular, less so in the sociological literature.
Would you mind if, uh, when they sent the survey out, that this was sent out also, or the entire presentation is out in PowerPoint, or just the, the background of the literature, however you want to do it? Would you mind that?
I have a note to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts before we move on?
Yeah, quick question, Jake. When the study is complete, how do, will, how do we find out the results?
Yeah. So, um, with the university's policies, I'm not allowed to share pre-drafts of this study until it's actually published. Uh, all of our dissertations are publicly published by the university in collaboration, I think, with their publisher. I'm not sure which one that is these days. Um, but once the study is actually produced, uh, I'm then authorized to share a copy with all the participants of the study. It will be quite long, so I apologize ahead of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is 9D, which is upcoming dates.
All right. Thanks for your patience there. Um, okay, upcoming dates. Uh, the next meeting date is March 7th, and we will not be having a meeting on March 7th, so you are free that evening. Um, we will be having a meeting and it's fairly well confirmed on March 21st. So please mark that on your calendars. Um, as an adjunct to that, I wanted to mention that you recall the bylaws conversation that we had a couple of months ago? And the bylaws are getting ready to be adopted. We expect them to be adopted on, um, later this month on the 26th. And so along with that, um, section 2 dash 53 of the code is also getting amended, and that pertains to what's related to the next meeting, which is, um, those go, would go into effect, the new code would go into effect March 1st. And the bylaws reference this section of the code, particularly in, in, um, the section under absences. And you remember, we had a discussion on absences and what's excused and what's unexcused, et cetera. So we are going to be implementing a, a little bit different, um, strategy since we need to keep you all, um, reminded of, we need to know if you're going to be absent from a meeting. Know that you're going to be absent, not with illness or some, something that just unexpectedly came up that you, you know, couldn't attend. But if you're going to be on vacation or you're just, you know, you, you know you're going to be otherwise occupied one of the evenings of the planning commission and you know you will not be able to attend, please let us know at least a week in advance. And what we're going to do is send out, um, an email, um, a week ahead of when we normally send out the packets. So you're going to get probably two emails. You're probably going to get one, um, two Fridays before saying, please let us know if you're not going to be able to make it to the meeting and confirm that you will be making it to the meeting. And if you're not going to be making it to the meeting, you know, just, I'm going to be on vacation or whatever. Um, and then you'll still get the packet email on the Friday before the meeting. But we just want to kind of ease you into this so that you remember to let us know at least seven days ahead of time because that is in our code. And so we really need you to adhere to that policy. Otherwise, you may get a, a warning letter. So just easing you into it here. Um, and so next time I will have, well, as soon as the, the new bylaws are adopted, we'll go ahead and send those out electronically. Um, as I said, the expected adopted date is later this month, and then the code updates effective March 1st. Um, and we'll, we'll just make sure you've got plenty of advanced reminders because we don't want anyone to have any unexcused absences. If you come down with the flu the day of the meeting and you can't make it, that's excused. Um, but like I said, if you're just, don't let us know at all and don't show up, that's going to be an unexcused absence. And if you get, um, more than two of those, I think you, you get into trouble. So want to make sure we're all-
Actually, I think it was if you have two unexcused absences, you can no longer be on the commission.
Yeah. So just want to make sure that you're communicating with us and we're communicating with you and that we're sticking with at least seven days. I'm going to drill that into your minds and also into ours, um, because we will be keeping track of absences once this is adopted. Unexcused and excused. Um, so any questions on that? Clear as mud. Okay. Um, let's see here. Moving on to more fun things, the Dutch Brothers is open. So, um, on Wadsworth, so stop by and get a coffee. Um, and then, uh, kind of on a downer note for some folks, if you're going to be traveling on West 38th Avenue across Wadsworth, I believe it's going to be closed for about a week beginning March 11th. So just avoid that area maybe. Um, they are doing some deep underground utility work, and so there's no, no option. But the plus side is, is that, uh, the Public Works Department is working to get some different access points open so that you can get into shopping centers and things like that in that area, so.
Is that both directions?
Both directions.
So that's the 11th through the 15th of March?
I believe, I believe it's the 11th. It was the last I heard, and, and I think she said for about a week. So I'm not going to give you a specific date, but just keep it in mind. So, um, if you don't have to travel on 38th in that area, you might not want to. But again, the business accesses, we're working on getting those open so that there's some workarounds, uh, to get to where you need to go.
I have a question. I don't think you can answer it, but maybe you could pass this concern along. Um, when they closed 44th down, uh, Balsam Street becomes the connecting street that everybody goes up and down if they're trying, and that's going to happen. Can we get the police department or somebody to do some traffic mitigation? Because people think that they can drive 40 miles an hour through the residential neighborhoods. I've observed it frequently. And it's talking about the health and safety of your citizens. I just don't understand why they don't do more to get people to drive slowly.
I will pass your concern along. Thank you. I was still passing along.
Is that it?
That is it. Thank you.
We'll move on to commissioners' updates. Commissioner Kearns, do you have any questions, any comments?
I don't have anything tonight. Sorry.
Sorry, I called you Commissioner Kerr a few times.
No problem.
That's just a bad-
Kind of sounds the same.
Commissioner Gravy?
Yeah, I was going to mention, uh, those folks are probably aware around here, but the Clear Creek Makerspace is set to open this spring. The website is up and running, clearcreekmakerspace.com, and the membership portal is open. For those who are unfamiliar with this effort, it's, uh, being undertaken by Local Works, our friendly neighborhood 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and it's going to be an exceptional addition to the city. nonprofit, and it's going to be an exceptional addition to the city, and I would check out the website and consider becoming a member.
Thank you. Commissioner Disney?
I'd just like to ask my fellow community members to observe the speed limits in residential areas.
Ditto. So we have a new commissioner, Michael Moore, we're familiar with your work, your movie work?
Yes.
Do you have any updates for us? Welcome.
I do not have any updates, although I guess, thanks for having.
No sneak previews coming up?
Nothing, nothing to announce just yet.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, only thing I want to, I'm eagerly awaiting the renovation of Colorado Plus, they're out for six months, I guess, so when that reopens, please everybody have a beer there, and also I noticed the Apple Ridge Cafe is out for a month or so, so when they reopen, be sure to go there and check it out.
Thank you. Commissioner Shelkey?
No, I don't have anything.
So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have multiple seconds.
All right.
We're adjourned, oh, let's poll the commission.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
We're adjourned.